Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And if we could, we'll move on to the agenda first.
I'd like to make a motion for your approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I've got a question. Up on the dam and the drain project, is there anything else that's been discussed? There was a motion that was attempted to be made, and that motion was a tabled motion. It basically killed the motion. I'm sorry.
We can't hear.
Can't hear it. It'll be addressed when Mr. McKenney gets here.
So this requires a vote session.
What?
Hold on a second. Doesn't that have to be voted on by us? All due respect, any problem, help me.
I can't hear Mr. Vic's mic right here. You need your mic.
Is it working out?
Not at all.
I'm assuming he has told you.
Not at all.
Under his advisement.
When did you guys have a part in meeting the topic?
Out of order. Uh, Mr. McKenney has advised that into an after. And we will discuss it before closing. I will support Mr. Burton's motion. Roll call, please.
Brandon.
No.
Horton.
Yes.
Dick.
No.
Baldwin.
Yes.
So I would say it. I would say it. Uh, without the agenda being approved, I don't see how we can conduct any business.
If they were added to the agenda and we approved the agenda, we could still move forward and force McKenney to get here, and then he could speak on those issues while they're on the agenda.
He's coming.
Mr. President, I'm going to start. You are the one that's running the meeting.
We'll wait and see what our chairman wants to say.
There you go.
Look, Doc.
Guys, I think if we don't do something about the volume up there, we're not going to have any volume. Nobody can hear anything back here.
We, uh, they don't want approval of the agenda because we don't have the dam and the drain on the agenda.
A tie vote?
A tie vote.
Um, well, I think I might have it right here.
Mr. Burton made the motion, and Mr. Vic questioned why they weren't on there. Mr. Baldwin made second and is voting.
He should be talking.
But we have the vote on the agenda, but I'm not sure of the way of the stuff.
Is there any way you could discuss resolving it?
Mr. Vic suggested that we put it back on the agenda.
Mr. President, I may through the chair to address Mr. McKenney.
Please.
I made a suggestion that they get back, uh, for time being, put back on the agenda, and then when those subjects come up, that there's something that you wanted to present and why we shouldn't be speaking on it, then, you know, we do that course, so at least we can move forward with the agenda.
Is it, you, there's some understanding and appreciation why they're not on the agenda, isn't there? Okay. Oh, good. We're getting somewhere. Uh, so you went on the agenda for a limited purpose of having the topics addressed by me?
I have some correspondence that I would like to bring up.
Have you shared the correspondence with anyone else?
I believe the village already has the correspondence.
Do, do, do your colleagues know what it is?
I have not brought it to their attention.
Anyone? No one's attending?
No.
Well, I like your idea of having it brought up for a limited purpose, but it's, I think it's best, and I think you'll agree, it's, it's best if there's disclosure all along the way, just so that, uh, people are prepared to make a discussion of an item that you think is important enough to bring to the board. So, um, if you can resolve it, uh, I think, I don't think you can impede a meeting by not having an agreement on the agenda. You can proceed to the agenda as presented, and there'd be an objection, I think, to the, you know, that they proceeded without those items on the agenda, but it doesn't stop the meeting. But if you can have some middle ground, where you can have it on the agenda for a limited purpose, and that's what you want to do, that's fine. Wouldn't be a bad idea for you to share that with your colleagues, so. Make, it'll make for a better discussion, I'm sure.
And if you like, I'll, I'll limit my discussions to only the correspondence, without actually going through ideas of the drain or the dam, which I know that's in question.
Well, uh, I don't know, I don't know what the, I don't, I don't know. If you don't know what it's about, I don't know how we can say yes or no to it. I don't know what the correspondence is. Um, you know, I, I'm more assertive now about not discussing these matters than I was last month. We've had depositions in the meantime, and people are testifying that they believe that the village is liable because of things said at the meetings. They said it repeatedly. So, uh, I don't think there's any lawyer that's going to send you back to a meeting to discuss those things if people think there's liability that's at foot. So, that's my feeling on it, but, um, do you, do you care to disclose that at this time, what the, what the topic is?
I'd rather do it when we're, we're on record and notes are being taped, and then I can do it under administrative if you wish.
Well, why don't we do it under administrative, then? If that gets us moving forward, if that's okay with you.
I'll agree just to proceed with this meeting, so we're not standing here, but...
You know what? That's very important.
I'll, I'll reserve my, yeah, motions.
You, you can. And, and, and were it to be a two-two vote, I would say go on with the meeting, but register your objection as part of it, but we don't stop the meeting because of it, but we'll go on with the meeting and bring it up during administrative. So how do we want to backtrack here? Well, somebody, uh, there's been no, there's been no motion. I think you can make a motion to, to approve the agenda.
With objection?
It's been voted down. Yeah. I think you can revisit the motion, because it did, there was no, there was no action taken on the motion. It was voted on, but it didn't prevail. You can, you can reconsider the motion.
Does one of those two have to make the motion?
No, because there's nobody who prevailed. A motion for reconsideration, to, to answer your question, you can only make the motion if you order with the prevailing side. Nobody prevailed here, but you're not dead in the water. You can approve the agenda. So I would, uh, uh, call for a motion on the, uh, Mr. Chair, I would call for a motion on the approval of the agenda. Call for a motion to approve the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll support it. Now we'll do another roll call.
Brandon.
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
Horton.
Yes.
Vic.
Yes, on approach.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Now, moving forward, the approval of, uh, the meetings from our regular council meeting February the ninth. Any questions, comments? My wife can have a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, the minutes from the February night 2015 meeting.
I think Tim supported, didn't you?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Brandon.
Yes.
Horton.
Yes.
Vic.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Now, the closed session from, uh, February the ninth. I'll make a motion that we accept that.
I'll sign it.
Brandon.
Yes.
Horton.
Yes.
Vic.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Treasurers' report, purple one.
I'm just looking at the balance, almost an extra hundred thousand dollars in the general fund, just a little shy of it. More funded, do you mean? Is that like taxes, or some, I'm just, I'm just curious how the process works.
They have less money. They have less money saved.
Hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred sixty-three in the general fund, and now we're at two hundred eighty-four, four hundred forty-seven.
We did get taxes, we get some at the end of February twenty-eighth, because that's the last time we could pay them here. And we also got state revenue money. State revenue account.
Motion to accept treasurer's report from our fine. Sit there, please.
Roll call, please.
Brandon.
Yes.
Horton.
Yes.
Vic.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
No, we have our bills and transfers. Anyone?
Have we approached our Republic Services to see if we can, their rates could be decent on by chance, or?
We just signed a new contract with the March here.
How long's that contract for?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the bills and transfers. Support.
Brandon.
Yes.
Horton.
Yes.
Vic.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Our Eagle Scout presentation, Joseph Sopraz.
Sopraz. Sopraz. Sopraz.
I'm, um, Joseph Sopraz, from two three forty, and for my Eagle project, I'd like permission to do a bike rack in the Goodrich Park. Are there any questions about my bike rack?
Is this in right here?
Yeah. That's a picture of it.
I don't know, did anybody out there even see anything of the proposal? Do you have a picture you could hold up, or?
Um, yeah.
Just as close as I can come, if anybody can make this out.
Um, that was black and white one.
Could you tell us a little something about it, Tim?
It is a zinc-finished, steel-piped, powder-coated blue bike rack, and that's what it looks like.
And I assume that he will be working with Ethan as far as, and Park Committee as far as the location?
Yes, he came in and gossiped some parts for me about it, and I thought it was a great idea, um, and he will be meeting with Ethan to find out exactly where the best place would be, the place that, um, so they know where the kids come in and drop their bikes, and as far as the maintenance and stuff.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
When do you plan on starting?
Um, as soon as I can get it approved by the higher-ups in the scout program. It's not by them.
What's your goal amount you're looking for?
Goal amount? Um, I think it was like five hundred dollars.
And how do you get this money?
Um, I'm going to go and collect scrap metal, and, um, I'll take the money donations for it, too.
Dad will be busy.
Is there, is there a website, or a pamphlet, or something that people need to have in order to give you a donation?
Um, no.
Is there a way to contact you, someone to give donations?
Uh, no, I don't have the way.
We, we've come up with something for sure, though. Could we use the, the village? Could we use the staff? So people can make contributions.
We can't, we can't collect them. We can put them on, um, the face, Facebook page and direct them to, and the village can accept them.
So if you could give the office a context, that they can put something on there, give you a little exposure.
Okay. Thanks.
That'd be a good idea. Help your crazy dad. We'll need a motion for this, too, but I, I will make a motion that, uh, we accept it, and I'll encourage you in your project.
Thank you.
Brandon.
Yeah.
Horton.
Yes.
Vic.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck.
I still need science in my hands, though.
This guy right here.
Oh, okay. Thanks a lot. I'll enjoy giving you...
Start you off.
Not a whole lot, but of course, something.
Here we go. Public comment. The mic is yours.
Henry Wortella, eighty-ten Schuman Drive. I was up here last month and addressed some minutes, and I know I read the November eighth minutes, two thousand and ten. Mr. President, after you read those minutes, would you agree that the minutes of June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven are incorrect? If you'd like, I'll read, uh, I know it's the minutes. The minutes of June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven state as no mention was ever made Now, there's minutes from November eighth that state just the opposite. Therefore, I think those minutes should be corrected. Not only are there minutes, but I also have a petition, a recall petition, that was taken around on January ninth, two thousand and eleven, that was circulated by you, Mr. Mark Baldwin, and the very first line up there says, Mrs. Wortella voted to terminate the attorney who had been represented, represented the village for twenty years. Now, that would be Mr. McKenney. And on that petition, Richard Horton signed it, Mark Baldwin signed it, Ralph Maury signed it, Richard Shroley signed it, and Mrs. Pat Sheriff signed it. Those minutes are not correct. They should be amended or corrected.
Well, I won't discuss it now, but I will look into it.
Okay. Thank you.
The minute's around, but we'll look into it. Anyone else?
Patricia Wortella, eighty-ten Schuman Drive, and, Mr. Baldwin, if you would, um, I said I'd address it one each month. Make sure that Schuman Drive, uh, is inspected for crack sealing. It's a great time to come over to Schuman Drive to see how, uh, in despair that the entire street, um, it's been crack sealed once, completed that for the last three months, but it is caving in now. The road is. And it's being, it's being ignored, um, it hasn't been, uh, touched. I've addressed this to the council for numerous years. Uh, even when I was on council, I asked for it to be revisited. It hasn't. Um, it, the road itself is gonna, it's gonna be having to have major repairs to it. Could have been alleviated if this would have been done. Um, I'd like to be on the list. I'm gonna repeat that. Please put us on the list for crack sealing. This is preventative. The roads are crumbling. All those subdivisions are in desperate need, and I'm coming to you about Schuman Drive. Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else? And so, let's move on to unfinished business. We have the Genesee County Sheriff's Department for...
I'll report to the mayor.
Street administrator, nine eleven, wasting water, parks and rucks.
Street administrator, the DEQ's been out today, and will be out later this week, to hutbacks to fill in potfalls. If anybody knows of one, and you want to give the office a call, please do. They're driving the roads all the time, but since we don't have potfalls, people are better...
Thank you.
...moment's known. Um, nine-one-one, there really isn't anything to report, wasting water, gating the street, and parks and rucks, we have some one presentation regarding a bike rack, so that's what we have on.
Doug McNamee wanted Samantha's application for the project. He's under the, we just wanted to let you know, so that's, that's still coming forward.
Thank you. No. He is home, though. A few noise.
Dave's home, and he's already out working, um, moving some vehicles and talking to people about where they can park their cars and where they can't park some other types of vehicles.
And your administrator?
Uh, yes, this is the month that I start working on, uh, the new budget, and, uh, we will be setting up, um, special council meetings to work on that in the near future. Um, we will be getting an increase, whether the vote goes through or the vote doesn't go through, on May fifth, in state revenue by about three percent, and, um, as of this point, we'll still be getting that two thousand dollars every quarter that I talked about as far as the road money coming in. Um, Ethan and I are going over, um, things regarding the DEW, um, what they might need, where, where we're going to be doing road work, um, those types of things. That's the beginning of the budget process.
Sidewalks?
I don't have anything. Unless anybody has anything to report.
And I guess we go down to the attorney.
It's good, Mr. President. Correspondence under administrative, so they want to...
Oh, yes.
Um, last month's meeting, we received a letter from, uh, Jeff Wright and DEQ, dated January twenty-third, regarding that they would not be able to attend, uh, the meeting that we were, uh, trying to set up for, uh, our community. Six days after that, that's yours. There was a letter that was also given January twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen, addressed to Jackie Sidge, and it's my understanding that it was supposed to be CCDD as well. Um, and you can, uh, read this letter, but on the bottom of it, it says, although our office welcomes comments from the public, municipalities at any time, it is our office's intent to proceed with the Wheelock Watkins Project using all available information. So my concerns that I have is why this letter wasn't shared with the rest of the council, um, why we are having a debate on motions on whether we should proceed or not when we were asking Mr. McKenney for his advice to go to Jeff Wright and ask if he was truly going to move forward when we already knew the answer. Now, I do understand the severity of the situation that we're in, but I think this letter kind of sums it up from the Genesee County Drain Commission, or their intent. And I did talk with Susan Cubic, the sewer areas are coming out, when the snow's gonna be, uh, leaving the ground, so to speak. I'm assuming even the frost lines are lifted, you know, I don't know what the timeline is, but...
I did not receive this letter. Last letter I got from Genesee County was Jeff Wright's letter saying he wasn't coming to me. I can check with Susan Cubic.
Can somebody read it to us?
Uh, I've not seen this letter, and it's not signed, and, uh, it wasn't my understanding that I was asking for a delay in the project. My understanding was I was asking for a meeting.
We were, we were asking if you were gonna approach Jeff Wright to see if his intent was to move forward. That was...
No. Well, I was understood that we wanted to have a meeting to discuss the Mill Pond and to discuss, uh, the what, the drain, the project, that the Board of Determination recommended. And I, I had several discussions with the attorney for, um, the Drain Commission Office about having a meeting, not about anything else, just about having a meeting. Um, I did ask them for a thirty-day extension, uh, a long time ago, um, to get some information together, but I'm not since asked for an extension. I'd not since understood that I was asked to ask for an extension.
And if, and if I may, through the chair, to address that with Mr. McKenney. Okay. Um, the motion that was attempted to be made was to end all further discussions, um, with these departments on this project, and I asked for an amendment on the motion to allow Mr. McKenney to go to Genesee County Drain Commission and ask to see if his intent was to move forward with the project. Then we were told he couldn't make an amendment to any motion, so the motion got tabled, which killed that motion. So that's what the discussion was for, was for the intent to move forward so we could proceed with discussions on the Wheelock Watkins drink.
My understanding was I was, I left here with the understanding, and I executed on that understanding, that I was to ask if Jeff Wright would participate in a meeting with the village of Goodrich, and the meeting would be a discussion about, uh, issues that were, uh, pending in the litigation, the, the Mill Pond and the Wheelock Watkins drain. He will not participate in a meeting, and he is going forward. I can tell you that his attorney... And he is going forward, I can tell you that, his attorney told me he's going forward with the drain project. His attorney told me that also.
So then that, I'm sorry, Mr. President, to the chair. I think you can see where my last question's gonna go now.
Yeah, I think maybe we should talk about the rest of this up there and then we'll, we'll go from there.
You know, the letter's not signed.
I understand that, but she sent me the email with both letters that were sent and then she did apologize, I'm signing, I'm not seeing you a signed copy, I didn't have that in fast time.
And the letter's dated January 29th.
I've not seen this letter.
I've not seen the letter, but I did, I did make that request with reference to the letter, that's it.
Are you good for now? Okay. Once again, a motion then to go to closest meeting and go to our post-special meeting.
To discuss pending litigation and roll call, please.
I had a question, if I may, since it's been supported. Does it have to be on the agenda that now we are discussing the Wheelock Watkins Drain and the dam in closed session? Or are we just assuming, or I should use assumption, but...
We can't discuss Wheelock Watkins Drain in closed session, we can discuss the pending litigation, which involves Wheelock Watkins Drain. I think what the chair was making reference to is that I did mention what the attorney said to me about no meeting with Jeff Wright and also about he, Mr. Wright's office is going forward with the drain project as, as, as had been recommended or ordered, if you will, by the Board of Determination.
And I just want, I just want to get clear, everybody, I'm good. I'm not gonna keep beating that word, I'm good.
Roll call. Tim?
Horton.
Yes.
Vic.
Yes.
Baldwin.
At this point, it looks like the Wheelock Watkins Drain may be on the fast track, according to what I heard tonight. There's been two engineering proposals, both of them preliminary, I understand, done by the same company. The process, as I understand it, there'll be a third, which will be the firm engineering proposal. And that's the way they would proceed, which will talk about getting easements and things of that nature as you go along with that. We've been advised that if there's a financial negative impact on the community, the community can say basically, we can't accomplish this, you have to find something else, or you will put it in phases, so it doesn't have that major impact on you. There's supposedly, and that's what I'm asking the attorney, village attorney, look into that. There's supposedly case law where this comes into effect. Number one is that we have the continuing cost of the building, it's a bond issue, I suppose we're still paying on half. We have the lawsuit that's going on, we have to do something about the dam, and then we have the Wheelock Drain. So to go in and investigate what kind of impact that would have, and we won't know that until after Mr. Wright makes a decision on who gets what percentage of the cost. I would like to find out what the engineering costs are, because my understanding is that you rolled those into the cost of the construction. We asked the Drain Commission and their response was basically, we treat each individual project as an individual project. So it's almost, we're not commenting on it if this is accurate or not, that if you cannot afford to do it, you can ask them to give you a better kind of understanding on how to accomplish it. Have to do something because Board of Determination said yes, do something, but they can't force it on you allegedly, we've been told, if it's gonna cause you severe financial hardship. So we'd like to find out.
Patricia Wortella, 8010 Schuman Drive. And what Mr. Ceroli is saying is almost laughable to me and it should be to the public. Knowing the fact that we've had these costs occur and have been occurring, this council and previous council did nothing to curb their spending. They have done nothing to help the community. He himself, along with another council member, took the petition around this Wheelock Watkins Drain. You petitioned the Board of Determinations. And how dare you get up here and say you want to stop it with the safety and health and welfare of this community? How shameful, how shameful is that? And mine, myself, sitting in this audience, having you attend this meeting to say such a thing.
Please, please direct, please direct your comments to me.
I'm looking at you. But you have a, you have a previous council member stating those facts. And to stop a project that pertains to the safety and health and welfare of this community is deplorable. And to have him stand up here and state that, because all he's worried about is his dam and his, and his mill pond? This is what he's concerned about. And I'm addressing it to you. Somebody's not gonna come up here publicly and say it to you to your face, I'll say it. These people deserve better. You were elected, Mr. Baldwin, you were just elected with these other two individuals, you were. And you know, you know darn well what's going on in this community. We are spending our money, we've given out raises, we have full-time employees with benefits, but yet you have yet to even address those subject matters. Now you, as president, run this council, not this administration. Now, I'm asking you to pull up your pants and act like a person and a man that you're supposed to be and do what's right. This man over here telling the people that they could stop this project is ridiculous to say the least. And I'll be the first one to say it, and anybody else is too afraid to speak up and tell what's right and what's wrong is, that's not my fault. I'm not gonna stand by and watch somebody come up here and say that we have every right to stop this project.
Anyone? Council comments? Tim?
I'm just burning it up, I'm feeling giddy. Just like to let everybody know that President Baldwin, Ethan, and will you be attending? Jackie will be having a discussion at the end of this week in regards to the DPW, the roads. And obviously, the roads are in bad shape, everybody knows that, unfortunately, it's county statewide. So we're gonna, we're gonna address that issue. And we're also gonna address ours. I don't wanna step on it. Let me, let me, let me pass it on to the president now, did I miss anything?
Basically, daily operations, the seasonal goals, and then we really need to look into the road improvement funding options and how we can get money and...
What he said.
Yeah, it was, a lot, it's a beginning, it's a beginning.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Love working with you. Mr. Vic. Mr. Horvath?
No, no comment.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.